Call this meeting to consider open and just so everybody knows, the purpose of the meeting is for council to adopt or reject the engineer's report or to direct the engineer to make changes related to errors, omissions, design, or scope of work. Any questions or concerns regarding assessments will not be considered or addressed this evening and should be directed to the Court of Revision. Any questions regarding the Court of Revision should be directed to Lana Vanderveen, the City's Drain Superintendent, and for those that may wish to speak, just to remind you, you have to live within the watershed and be assessed in order to speak on this. So if you don't live in the watershed and you're not assessed, the Drain of Jack doesn't allow you to speak. So we take questions from those that are only being assessed for this drain. If I could have counselors Bodnar and Hoyle move at the meeting to consider agenda for the Point Abinol Drain dated July 7, 2025, be confirmed as circulated. Any questions, counselors? All in favor? Let's carry disclosures of interest. Counselor Aquilina.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to declare conflict. I'm on both the Port Colborne and Zavitz Drain.
Okay, thank you. Any further disclosures? Seeing none. So right now, we have a presentation from Paul Marsh, P. Edge of EWA Engineering, Inc. Turn it over to Lana and you can take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so as you had mentioned, we will be listening to a presentation from Paul Marsh, who is the appointed engineer for this. Mr. Marsh was appointed back in 2018, 19, 2019 on this particular project. He has been working on it diligently along with other projects that he's been working on for us. And we now have a final copy or a final report for you to consider. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Marsh so that he can enlighten you.
That's a distraction. Is there any way for me to see the presentation on this? I mean, it's okay. If I have it here, I can look at and I can watch it there. So I should be fine. That's okay. I'm fine. Thank you. Okay, so the agenda, I have quite a few slides for technical parts of the report. So I'm going to go through this relatively quickly. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, members of the public for this opportunity to present this report. I'm going to talk about the drainage history a fair little bit. It's a bit of a rehash from what was done in the first public meeting. But I think it's a good idea to understand the history. I'll talk a little bit about the baseline report, watershed modeling, the drain improvements proposed, and I'll go through a high level of the assessment schedule. And then I'll talk at the very end about what the next steps in the process are. There are four reports prepared as a part of this project. The baseline report talks about everything that's in the drain. That's where the history of the drain is. It kind of talks about the environmental aspects of the drain. And then the hydrology and hydraulics report is really an engineering report. It talks about my analysis of where the water goes, where the water derives from. It's really a technical report. The Point Abinol Drain Report itself is the drainage report. It proposes improvements under Section 78. It proposes works to be done under Section 74, which is maintenance. And it talks about the total costs for those and assigns those costs to everyone that's in the watershed. And then the other one is, there is a preliminary design report prepared for pumping. The pumping report's not part of the agenda tonight. It's really just those three other reports. So there's a lot of interesting historical documents on the drain. This one here is from 1927, and it really shows the outlet as it was constructed north-south and out to the Lake Erie. And it went out through these twin concrete box culverts. So they've been there since 1927. One was there even earlier. This is showing that there a second one was added in 1927. This one is even earlier. There were two drawings like this. And I like these because they're just so beautifully done as drawings. They're much nicer than anything I can do with a computer these days. And they're showing the drain outletting through the beach sand dunes that form a barrier along the western edge. And they're showing three feet, four inches per mile, which I've worked this out in metric because our reports are all in metric now. And it's roughly 0.06% as a grade line. So even from 1901, that's been the target grade line in Point Abinol. This is the most recent report, 1958, I believe. Oh, no, this is an older one. The 58 one's a different one. But this is showing that there's half, oh, it is from 58. It's showing half of it is now extended into Port Colborne and at a grade of 0.06%. And it's showing, oop, back one. It's showing a portion in Fort Erie, but not the whole portion at Fort Erie. It starts here at 4,300 feet. So we know that the outlet in this drawing is 4,300 feet away. It's really just showing the middle. And I have a plan view that shows this a bit later. This is the history in total. You know, Birdie Township and Humberstone, that's mostly what's on the historical drawings because it wasn't Port Colborne and it wasn't Fort Erie at that time. It was two townships, Birdie and Humberstone. It talks there, the founding of Port Colborne in 1834. Really, things start to happen after the construction of the canal in the 1850s. And right around the time 1900, when the Provincial Drainage Aid Act was done, is when a lot of this work for the drain was done. And what I'm going to jump to is, this is the most recent report that is what's used by the Town of Fort Erie now for assessments and Port Colborne, from 1983, and it's the C.J. Clark Report. One, two, three, and four is, number one, is the tribunal ordered the city of Port Colborne to prepare a report under the Drainage Act to put pumping on the Point Abinol Drain. So the city hired an engineer to do that in 95 and 96. They did two reports. One was a outlet along Pleasant Beach Road out to the lake that we don't think was ever constructed. And the other one was a pumping station in Fort Erie. After those reports were filed with the city, there was a tribunal, that's number four up here, it was held in 1998, because people appealed the proposal to build a pumping station. And the tribunal, despite the fact that they ordered the report to be prepared in the first place, ordered that the pump not be constructed and built to the residents because there was opposition to it. So it's an interesting story because people wanted pumping. So the city hired an engineer, prepared a report, and then people didn't want the pumping. I think part of it was they saw what it was going to cost, and then they didn't want the pumping. This is that 1927 report, and the red arrows show you the scope of what was done in 1927. The piece in the top right is where it used to go out to the lake. It's called, we call it now the East Branch. But originally, it went to the lake along that top side. And this work in '27 rerouted it to an existing outlet that was down at the bottom. This is the work by J.R. Scott in 1958, which is extending it into the same location it is today in Port Colborne. There's another part in there that I didn't get to because I cannot, I think it's 1958, which is when the Hagerty Branch gets put into the drain. And it was called then Branch Number One. And in this report, we call it the Hagerty Branch because there's too many drainage reports with Branch Number One in it. So if we say the Hagerty Drain, then it's got a proper name that we can keep track of. This is what the soils in the area looks like. This is a computer image which shows soil mapping. All those three-letter designations are really mostly just different types of clay. The drain itself is 792 hectares, making it an average-sized drain in the Niagara area. The watershed fall from the very top of the land is about 2.6 meters per 1,000. And the drain average fall slope is 1.4. But what you'll see in a chart shortly is, that's almost all in the top part of the drain. The lower part of the drain is not very good for slope. The north and south side, this is the very bottom, those outlet lips, lips invert for the culverts that go to the lake, 172.8 and 173, which is very low, and I'll talk about that some more in a minute. This is the grade of the drain shown overall in Excel. Now, I have drawings of this, but this puts it in an easier-to-look-at scale. The green arrow is the middle part where we don't, we don't have survey. The surveyors didn't go in there. They went in the middle there, just at the bottom part of Matthews Road, and then off Holloway Bay Road, they surveyed up into Port Colborne. But you can see past Holloway Bay Road, there's a significant amount of gray, grade, right, where there's good fall through there. But after that point, there is not a lot of fall that goes to the outlet. And then the very, very end of the outlet is quite steep. And this is the average monthly water level for Lake Erie from the Water Survey of Canada. And so you can see that almost two-thirds of the drain, on average, is going to have standing water in the bottom of the drain. This is showing a map from the Ag Atlas, from the Ministry of Ag and Food. And the drain is color-coded here according to fish protection designations. One is DFOC, which says that there aren't sensitive fish species. And the other one is DFOE. And what's peculiar about this drain is that E is in the middle between two Cs. And so it's a bit peculiar to have fish just in the middle of the drain but not at the outlet or at the other upstream part. But that's how their designation is, and that can sometimes reflect that they're doing the assessments of fish species in different stages. And it requires that Troy notify the DFO if he's doing any work in this middle part because it's identified as an E rating. Well, in there, I left that out. This is generally what the drain looks like, and it's showing the tax-identified farm properties that are within the drain. And I used this slide during the public meeting, and someone complimented me on it, so I figured I'd stick it in here again. And it's really just talking about the way the drain functions from a hydraulic point of view. The green part above is where that slope of the land is, and the water runs off here to the drain with no problem whatsoever. It's got good grade to the, the point there where the first blue arrow is where it heads east. The yellow is all of the dune properties. And I describe this being like a bathtub where you put a pail of water in, and then you measure how fast it runs out the spout bottom part, the drain of the bathtub, except in this case, half the bathtub is made of sand. And so water in the lake will go into part of the bathtub faster than you can move it out the bottom. There's a balance that occurs because of the sand dunes and the hydraulic role of how high the lake is with how the water flows out the watershed. So one of the challenges, if we put a pump on this and we wanted to pump this dry, you could pump for a really long time because the lake is constantly seeping through the dunes into this drain area. So we really, when we talked about pumping, we're talking about pumping surface floodwaters. We're not trying to pump groundwater that's appearing because it's flowing from the lake into the drain. This is the outlet, and I'm showing it from the three culverts that go to the tennis courts through to the outlet with the gate. And this is done vertically to scale. So let me test. Oh, I'll come around there and point to it. Excuse me, council. What I wanted to point out in this is this little part here, 175.9, that's the elevation of the road that the drain crosses under. But we have recorded events in Fort Erie just in the last, since I've been working on this report, where the flood elevation was measured at 176.5, oh, 4.5 and 176.5 at two different times. And the predicted flood elevation from the Conservation Authority is even higher than that. I think it's 176.7 or 0.8, somewhere in there. And so whether, you know, the gate will only protect against so many storms. As soon as the lake level is as high as it was two years ago and a storm blows up, the gates aren't going to stop water from going backwards. It's just, it's too low. It's not enough of a barrier. And anybody that lived along here saw that, I think it was maybe two or four years ago. The other part is, the inverts of these culverts currently are just a little bit lower than the invert to get into the outlet, which is hydraulically not how, as an engineer, how we like them to be. This is the outlet inspection report. It was conducted underwater, as you can see from the images. And this is of the twin cast-and-place culverts that go out to the lake. And the report that's important here is they're seeing scour and scaling. That means the concrete's starting to fall apart. And their overall report is that the north cell is in poor condition, and the south cell is in fair to poor condition, and they recommended replacement within one to five years. So that's part of the scope of the report, is to replace that structure. The other parts, there's challenges with the grade lines, and there isn't any way to redo this drain and make it function perfectly. The grade lines in the lake, there's just limits to what we can do. The outlet's going to be replaced in one to five years, but the town said only for the part that's under the town right-of-way. So the existing is quite a bit more than that, but the town's only interested in doing what they have to do for the roadway. I don't know how this originally got built so long as what it was, but the proposal is just for the part that's under the town road. There are some culverts in the Port Colborne area and on the Hagerty Branch that need some replacement. We did look at the pumping station, and I've got a couple of sites talking about that. And are there opportunities for improvement? We'll talk a little bit about that later in the Everything in the watershed report is to a design storm. And the design storm is 68.9 millimeters in a 24-hour period. So we have storms, and these are two examples here that have happened in the past that are higher storms than what we're designing for. We can design for higher storms, but it makes the drain more expensive. The one-in-five target, which is what this is, is similar to what's required in an urban setting. If this is an agricultural drain in southwestern Ontario, sometimes we would change and just choose one and two-year. But even that, these days, means the farmers are losing their crop. And they're not interested in losing the crops because they're underwater too long. So one in five is what we've chosen for all of the reports that we've done. But it's important to recognize there are going to be storms that cause flooding because they're higher than the design standard we're working towards. This is what the model looks like. It's a, it's called a node link model. It models the runoff at each one of these areas, and then it shows how it gets out to the lake based on the surveyed grade lines. This is what that looks like. And you can see there's a funny little bump there. That's a bump that the survey showed at the end of Matthews Road, so it goes in the We also look at specific cross-sections, and we analyze whether they have the capacity that the model says they need to have. And we do the same with culverts. This culvert that's shown up there on the right, the little blue line at the very top there is showing that, in this case, for that design storm, water's going to go over the top of the road because it can't get through the culvert fast enough. And then these are some of the culverts that are identified as less than that design target. So this is the pumping station. This drawing is from the original report that was prepared in 1996. This is what was proposed. It's a pumping station with a motor and a suction pipe with a discharge pipe. This circle is a connection to that box culvert that exists now. This is, this is our preliminary design that we laid out. You can see there's a new box culvert that's proposed, but behind that, it's an open channel. And for pumping stations, we kind of prefer to be pulling water from an open channel because there's more room for the water to flow into the pump station. In this case, it's still a suction tube, a pipe that's passing water from the open part into the wet well. We're proposing a submersible one, so there's no structure above the ground. There's actually, in this case, going to be a structure slightly above the ground. And the target, based on standard accepted practices, is 611 liters per second, and I think that works out to about 9,000 US gallons per minute. This is what that looks like. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but just to point out a few things. This is the pipe in the canal that's putting water. This is the wet well. I'm pointing over here, and you guys can't see me. This is the pipe that takes water out of the open part of the channel and puts it into this wet well. This is the submersible pump itself. And then this blue line is a new discharge pipe that passes out to the lake. This is still the proposed replacement to the cologne. Just for reference, the other part, too, is a little funny orange thing there is meant to be a fire hydrant. It's a fire hydrant that's at the corner of, is it Buffalo? I mean, Gulf Club there in the corner. There's a fire hydrant there, so we set a benchmark. That elevation is 175.8. And then the floodproof line that the Niagara
Paul, just step back towards the microphone.
Sorry. Okay. Yeah. So the floodproof line that the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority shows means, anything electrical that we have is going to be above that or else it's going to be waterproof, which means it's more expensive. So it's at 177.3. And the benchmark, which means is the hydrant, that's kind of where it is right on the ground, is 175.84. It's about 1.45 difference in height that we're expecting to have to protect for a flood. that we're expecting to have to protect for a flood. That's one of the reasons why we're recommending that this be a complete submerged pump package. Even if the water comes in here, the pump will work. In this case, the water's so deep around it. I'm not sure what we would still be pumping to, but it doesn't damage the pump. This is what the model shows with some of the pumping. With the gate open, there's not much change here. The pump still comes on and off because it can get in, so it will run. But it doesn't do very much because most of the water prefers to go out to the lake through an open channel. The second one is with part of the lake halfway up the gate. So it's restricting flow from getting out to the lake easily. And this shows the pump coming on and off. And I can't, it's, the screen sharing thing is covering this up, but it says that it lowers... Well, actually, it's the next one. It's over here. It says that it lowers the predicted flood elevation by .2 meters, which is about eight inches. So that's what is the forecasted benefit of having the pump station. It lowers the predicted flood elevation by .2 meters, about eight inches. On this side, it's with the gates completely closed. And now the pump is running all the time. That's how water is getting out over this three-day period. And it's closed all the time. And not enough water goes out. You can see that there's a significant amount of water that's just there. There's no reduction. It's all flat, and it's all waiting to go back out. So the most effective way, the conclusion, the most effective way to get water out to the lake is for the lake to go back down and have the gate open again. As long as we're pumping water, it works, but it doesn't move the water fast enough to make a difference. So this is in a preliminary design report. If anybody here wants that to go forward and wants the pump station to be built, they go through this petition drain request. They submit a petition and says, "I would like the pump." And then there's a clear, you know, identification that you're in favor of what the preliminary report says. And it basically says the rough estimate's $450,000. It would be split between people's property is below 176.5 meters because they're the ones that benefit. But there's a portion shared with everybody in the watershed because it's everybody's water that's going to the outlet, called the liability outlet portion. There's no assessment that we're supposed to put into this, but it's preliminary. It says this is roughly what the cost would be, and this is what everyone's share of that cost would look like. So here's the things that we've identified for improving the drain. We looked at abandoning the east stub. So this is a part where it used to go to the outlet, but since 1927, it hasn't done anything. But from what we can figure, find, figure out, it still exists as a drain. And so we would have to have the road authority petition to abandon it. And they didn't want to do that. So it stays in here as a drain called the east branch. It has maybe 15 properties that are contributory to it. And we're converting it into a two-stage channel. There's a low channel that's narrow and a wide channel that you can run the lawnmower through without it being at risk. But in a flood event, it carries more water in the wider channel. There is a design grade recognition of the Port Colburn site, where there is grade. There's a restatement of everything there in metric terms because the previous report was all feet and inches. And it's updated for the current property mapping. There's a couple of culvert improvements identified. And number four, the Point Abinol culvert gets replaced. Instead of two channels, it's one single concrete box culvert. This improves the flow by a small amount, not a gigantic amount. So it's quite similar to the previous two, but it is improved. And the increased flood capacity and flow, this section through number five, it's a bit of a jungle. So the surveyors didn't want to even go in there. And so part of this proposal is a two-step process that we've identified, clearing some of the access on the east side of the drain so that someone can get in there and then actually check that there's no humps, remove any deadfall that's blocking the channel. So that first part is just getting access into it, and the second part is actually improving the flow. This is the culvert, and I've identified three parts in here. The part under the road is roughly 15, 16 meters. The culvert's box parts are typically delivered in two-meter segments, so it makes sense to have that kind of a whole number. And then the outlet is, you know, the, we'll just call it the outlet for now. So there's the part where it's under the road. That's going to be a box culvert. And there's the outlet. And then there's the upstream part that used to be closed, but is now going to be open because there isn't anybody to pay for it to be closed. This means that there would need to be two private access culverts. The house furthest to the west said they didn't want any access, so there's none shown. But there is an access culvert being shown for the house that faces onto Point Abinol Road. This is what that looks like. The outlet has flared wing walls. It has a new gate that swings open and closed. I'll show a little bit about that later. And these are box culverts. We chose them because you can construct this at two halves, keep the road open and construct the upstream half while people are going around. Then you switch and put it over top of the new part, and then do the downstream part. There's two challenges with that. There's a gas line and a water line that one run through here. So the gas line may have to be moved because it goes actually through the proposed open part. And I suspect they will want to keep it buried. The costs for all of that are assigned to the gas utility, but it will make a challenge to coordinate that with the replacement of the culvert. The water line, the city will look after. This is the grade. And one of the things that's different in here is the old culvert was quite steep. And I have made this culvert not as steep. The way this works, it was so steep that it was so down so far in the water, most of the water's sitting in it anyways. And so it's not really flowing out. And so we raised it up so that it's still flowing out to the lake, but it's just not as steep as the old culvert. And so the, you know, that's the new invert, 173.15. It's also not as long, so it changes the way it works. The project components are 14 meters of three-meter by 1.5-meter precast culvert. There's a four-meter access culvert, which is very narrow, but it's a single-lane access culvert. There's guardrails that get constructed. So the new open part, we looked at a couple of designs for the banks. One is to just do all concrete blocks. This happens other places in Port Colburn and Fort Erie. We looked at an all-natural approach, which is live stakes with stone. And we looked at this product that's out of the United States. And it's kind of sandbags. They're held in place with stakes. In their brochures, they show it all covered in vegetation, but that's from the southern US. I'm not sure we'd get the same vegetation in the north. And what we ended up deciding was kind of a hybrid is concrete blocks where we have to get above the water. Nothing is going to grow on the bank below the water. So in that below-water point, we're going with the concrete or stone blocks. And then above that, we have a geo-grid, which means it's natural existing soil that's on site, but it's planted with plant materials to reduce erosion within a grid of plastics to hold soil in place. At the very top is a rock, is some rocks with those live stakes. That's really just to mark out where the edge of it is. And then this shows the change. And what I want to show is, I think it's there. This is the old culvert and how steep it was to the lake. Right? And the last part there, that's the new culvert. It's not as long as the old one. But by doing this, I can get rid of the lip that was higher than the tennis court culverts. So we get a nicer-looking curve going up to the tennis court culverts. One of the things we checked was the gates bigger. It's, instead of two gates, it's one big gate. It's three meters wide by 1.5 meters tall. We wanted to make sure that because it's bigger, that it would still open when the water's pushing against it. It's called hydrostatic pressure. The big gate does take slightly more water elevation to push it open, but not as much as I thought. And so it's like less than an inch difference. And so not a material change. We're proposing new culverts with a concrete headwall on the upstream side with steel bars so that when tree limbs come down, they get blocked out here instead of ending up down in this culvert. This is really just the channel improvements that we're showing along the backside of the drain going north. And I'm just showing this, the green line is the right-of-way, the original right-of-way. There's no road there, but it means that there's an allowance to use. But that puts us on the west side of the drain. And it's a more difficult spot to work with because it's lower. And so we're proposing to do the maintenance from the east side of the drain, A, because we can access in through that side and work our way north. But it's a better working zone is a 10-meter access right-of-way along that side. The other part is branch number one. Originally was shown going to the very center of the Hagerty field. No construction was done at the time of 1983 or '58, whenever the last report was. They pulled that from the plans. They only constructed to Mitchener Road, and they left the rest off. So the report still had the drain existing, but it was never reconstructed. And it's very hard to see where it goes out in that field. So we're ending it just north of the severed property. So it still ends on the farmer's field, but it doesn't go out into the field anymore. So the only maintenance the town of Fort Erie would have to do is along the side of that severed property there. Okay, so this is, this is the eligible administration costs. We have projected $175,000 in engineering fees. There's an interim finance allowance. Interest charges, $30,000. Applicable taxes, $7,000 for total admin costs of $212,500. The construction proposed management cost is $151,000. Hagerty branch improvements, so there is maintenance proposed for the Hagerty branch, $27,000. East branch channel improvements, $14,000. And those are construction costs, not the total budget. The outlet improvements, just the road culvert alone, is roughly $900,000. The gate improvements are $100,000. The Point Abinol conversion to open channel is $784,000. And the drain maintenance that the city of Port Colburn's proposed to do is roughly $26,000. And the drain maintenance the town of Fort Erie is going to do in that part, the lower part through the Point Abinol marsh, there's a contingency of $300,000 for a total of 2.341. There's allowances on the Hagerty branch for working corridors. And that's paid to the farm that's along the bottom part of the Hagerty branch. It's an allowance for damages if it's done while there's soybeans growing in that area for a total projected cost of $2.55 million. Assessment goes through the normal processes. We value all land the same. It's $22,000 per hectare. It's an agricultural evaluation. If you have a mansion on your property and somebody else has a shack on theirs, the drainage assessment for that is still going to be the same. We pay for land taken for work zones, which is what that allowance was. Only it was Section 30 damages. Other drainage engineers sometimes pay for trees, if it's ornamental trees. We prefer to try to plant two trees in place of any tree that's damaged. Generally, trees will only be taken if they're in the way of the construction work that's to proceed. Whoops. So the other ways to do assessment, Section 22 is an assessment for benefit, meaning that the land has increased in value because of the drain. 23 is outlet liability and outlet benefit. That's where most of this assessment takes place. Everybody whose runoff contributes to the drain gets an assessment based on a projection of what that runoff would be. So it's the bigger the property, the higher the assessment. The type of use can affect the assessment. But we balance that based on what we can see. And it's really neighbors being compared against neighbors. It's not the engineering one. I use a computer model for the engineering design. This is just to figure out who pays what for assessment. Special benefit, generally, it's 50% of culvert cost of construction, prorated for how it gets constructed as a cost. Section 23, roads and utilities pay for their own work. So there's a Section 26 assessment for what end bridge will have to pay to move their line. This is just the Section 23, and it's just showing everybody pays a portion of what ends up in the channel. These are the, are the main assessments. There's an Upper West assessment, which is most of what would go to Port Colburn. The Hagerty branch is all one assessment itself. The east branch is wall one assessment. And then all the rest of the works, because most of the work is occurring at the very bottom, is assessed to the whole watershed. So the principles are everybody pays upstream of the point where the work gets done. Most of this work is being done and costed at the outlet, so most of the watershed gets charged for that work. So the Hagerty branch, the total is $68,392, which is including their cost of the admin, administration fees. That's a special end benefit of $8,228. That's a culvert to this property. Roll number 102-800DBME Inc. It's prorated at 50% of the cost of the culvert. The rest of it is assigned through outlet liability. So everybody in the watershed pays a portion based on the size of their property. There's no road benefit or road liability assessed. The east branch is a total of $18,755. There's a land benefit, so the properties that are rate against it get a riparian benefit because right now, it's, it's not a clear channel. So this work will improve its function, and it'll improve their property adjacent to it. So they pay a small benefit assessed for it. That's these ones here, and that's the numbers that they're paying. Most of it, again, is outlet liability. And then this is the Point Abinol drain itself. The town of Fort Erie is assessed costs of $1.156 million for their portion of the culvert works. The utilities is assessed $17,226. A portion of Fort Erie's includes relocating the water main. There is a private special land benefit, which is the tennis court access and the culvert that's crossing where it used to be closed and is now going to be open. and is now going to be open. And it's prorated at only 12%, not 50%. And it's representative of their position in the watershed being closer to the outlet. There is a culvert on the Port, uh, Coburn side that's being extended and that's prorated at 50%. What's next? We're here where the engineer presents the report to council. Council gives owners the opportunity. There's an opportunity for appeals to go to the court of revision. And after that, there's appeals to either the tribunal or the referee. The tribunal is if you're appealing an error that you believe the engineer made or if you're appealing an assessment, the tribunal will hear those two things. If you're appealing part of the process, if you feel that we didn't follow the act correctly, you could go to the referee. If you're going to go to the referee, generally you're going to have a lawyer representing your interests at the referee. So in terms of degrees of effort, there's no cost to go to tribunal. The referee, it's, I don't want, it's serious business. Like lawyers, um, take over that whole exercise. Uh, that's the same thing, but just bigger. And then this is next steps. Report adoption by council is what triggers the next period. Um, I'm Paul Marsh from EWA Engineering. As you can guess, I was the author of the report. Troy is the drainage superintendent for the town of Fort Erie. And Alana is the drainage superintendent for the city of Port Coburn. Um, thanks, council.
Thanks, Paul. I'll get you to sit up front here because I'll go to council first with regards to questions. Uh, councillors, does any councillor have questions? You can't ask, so, okay. All right, so at this time we'll go to delegations. Um, we did have a Jeff Schall call in as a delegation. Is Jeff, okay. And you live in the, are you assessed on this drain?
Uh, I am.
Okay. You can come up, come up to the front if you want to give a delegation. Are you still going to give a delegation?
Um, I, I can't, I just have a quick question from some hours.
That's fine, yeah, come on up. Just state your full name, address and press the little red button there and we can go from there. Just to remind everybody, you do have 10 minutes with your, yeah.
Uh, Jeff Schall, uh, my address is, uh, 4870 Wildwood and,
Oh.
And, uh, 787 Point Avenue Road. Uh, the flooding that we experienced on, uh, Wildwood in particular, but also on Bay was, uh, came lit, uh, just up Point Avenue Road, how Erie, if you're familiar with.
Yeah, I, I know Wildwood.
Okay, okay. Um, so i- in the, uh, in the, your plan, I noticed that you haven't really specifically said that, okay, all the way from, um, we'll say the lower section of Point Avenue drain, there's going to be access for maintenance. You mentioned along the east side, you like to take some of that up along, uh, uh, the bottom until you get, and it sort of got, um, undefined as to sort of where that ends and then where it begins to get at the top because it's a, it's a sort of a hostile area there. And, and my question would be, um, maintenance is a massive factor in this flooding that we've experienced, just because there's so many obstructions in the drain and, uh, uh, not having the access. How, will maintenance crews have access to do what's needed to be done to, uh, to clear obstructions when they occur over that gap?
Top right, Paul. Oh, there you go. Go ahead, Paul.
Okay.
Yeah, so just sort of from the, the, right where the east branch starts down to, we'll say the tennis court, just for the sake of.
And that's it, that's the whole maintenance part.
That's right.
Except there, there is.
Like microphone? Yep, user's there, yep.
So yeah, the proposed maintenance is, is really everything in the town of Fort Erie, which starts at Holloway Bay Road and proceeds east, although portions of that have been done previously. There was some brushing work done at the end of Matthews Road.
Right.
So there have been some improvements there. And, and there's that, there's an old, um, crossing in that area where it used to be a property back in there. Um, and so we're not doing anything with that, but it just recognizes that there used to be different uses back in there at the time. But that north-south part where you pointed out for east is if we go up from the tennis courts along the east side, we get to that east branch. And then the only way out is if we cross somewhere.
Right.
Or follow the east branch up. So the idea is the machine would actually track back out again. And so it, the idea in proposing this side instead of the other side, the other side's a bit lower and a bit more connected to the marshy area.
Okay.
And the east side is just a bit higher. And when we say like a bit.
So is, is there going to be some sort of fill put in to create a high, like a, 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 a.
So the conservation authority won't let any fill go in this area because that, that's not what they're going to let happen?
There's a large stretch where it's, even if you go 10 meters off of the, where the actual drain is, it's still not passable by, by foot, let alone anything else.
Yeah, we had all kinds of discussions about how to go in and try to inspect this.
Yeah.
And that's why in the report, we've set this out as a two-stage process. Stage one is just to figure out how to get in there on a consistent basis so it can be maintained. And we've set aside a certain amount of money for that. And the second part is actually going in and removing deadfall, but also if there's humps formed in the bottom. You know, like we didn't get a survey of it. And even if we had wanted to do, there's a technique now where you can use sonar to pick up the bottom.
Okay.
We wouldn't have even been able to get the whole way up until we ran into a deadfall.
Yeah, it just, we, we found the only way that that drain flows nicely as a drain is if there's a defined channel. And for many years now, it's just been acres and dozens and dozens of acres of marshland. And there's no, uh, I shouldn't say no, there's little, um, uh, concentrated flow to, to remove that, that from our neighborhoods.
You know, and we, we talked about surveying and figuring out what we need to do, but it would have cost money to put that together.
Sure.
When in simple terms, we figured, let's get a defined access to it. So there's a working base and, you know, whatever that needs to be, it can be done under maintenance. We're not changing the proposed grade line. It's done under maintenance. So it's included in the report, but it's section 74 maintenance.
Okay, different.
But we're just, we're identifying that if the access in the past was on the road allowance to the west, we're proposing access on the east.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schall. Further questions from anyone? Yes, sir.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yep, come on up. You gotta come up to the podium, please. Name, address, and just press the red button on the speaker there, please.
My name is Chuck Reiner, 683 Point Avenue Road South. And so my, my, my first question is the outlet that's, that's there now, what's the maximum outflow capacity at this point? And how does that compare to what it will be under the new proposal?
Uh, that's a great question. Okay, so, uh, I'm going to keep.
Oh, you're on your microphone, sorry.
I'm going to keep it in approximate numbers, all right? So the approximate two, um, cell flow is around 2.8 to 3 cubic meters per second. And I believe my analysis of the 3 meter by 1.5 is north of 4.5 to 5 cubic meters per second. And the only challenge in doing this is that it, as the water goes up to fill the 1.5, like right now, the height is 1.4. And so I'm making it just a bit taller. But the taller part still has to have water in it, which means the water's higher behind it through the tennis courts at the back. So that would be my reservation in saying that I think the culvert's going to be able to flow full because there's a lot of water has to be fairly high behind it.
And if it's not high, what?
Well, then there'll be a small gap at, at the very top, right? But it will still be flowing more through it than the old one.
Then the next question, Matthews Road, if it had been continued down to the Avenue Hills Road.
Yes.
Is the existing drain on the east side of what that road allowance is or is, or is it on the west side?
So I'm going to get Troy to back me up on this. And I'm going to point over here. Actually, I'll point on this side if you want to come over here. So this is a road allowance and I didn't give it a name. And it's between two lots, um, two lots, two, uh, lots, lot lines or concessions? Lot lines, lot lines. And it's either one and two or two and three. But the Matthews Road is over here. It's one lot over.
Oh, okay, all right.
So this is on a road allowance that's, to my knowledge, never been opened. And the Matthews has always ended here, but there used to be, this little dot is the old, old culvert where there used to be a jog that went to a farmhouse down here somewhere.
Okay, so then this, this is a different road allowance, how they're speaking of?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks. Further questions? Yes, sir, come on up. Press the red button, name and address.
Uh, thank you very much, Greg Flynn, 421 Point Avenue Road South. Um, and I, uh, I'm, I'm curious about the, uh, the interplay between the wetlands on the east of Point Avenue Road, north of Erie Road, up near Wildwood and, and so on. And up, again, up towards that east branch, which is not news to me because I walk that road almost every day and I've, I've seen that. What's, wha- what could be happening or what is happening with respect to surge events and the hydraulic activity across the east branch? Because we sometimes see flooding across the road coming from east to west. And I'm just, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is this a, is this a mitigating or a militating effect? Is it helping or harming us?
Microphone, Paul.
Um, so I, I think I'll, I'll answer in two parts. Um, the wetlands are an identified feature east of the existing drain by the conservation authority and west. So they, they identify wetlands on both sides. But on the east side, there's really just a small area that's in the middle there by Wildwood where you speak about. But there's, when the lake goes up, and I, I talked about how it will go over Point Avenue Road and push west. But the first place that it seems to do that is the old pathway along east and just south of there. That land from, okay, so this is going back to, um, the data that you're seeing there on the map, it's collected by, uh, an orthophoto survey. So they put a dot every 10 meters. And so when I look at that dot, I can, I can say, well, how deep is the water going to be there? Now, it's, it's okay, but it's not super accurate. You know, like when it says 174.86, I'm not really confident that it's that accurate. It could be up or down from there. But it shows that there's a pathway, I think, from a long, long time, that water will first, if it's backing up from the lake, go through the top of the drain and into the wetland that's to the west. So, so I, I think there is a pathway where flooding happens there first. Then there's a little hump south of there in the land. But when we, when we talk about these heights of 176.5, um, that's over the road everywhere, like that's a major event.
Great, thank you. Uh, there's another hand up over here. Yep, come on up.
My name is Kirsten Fijabs and I own two of the properties that are directly impacted by the east, uh, branch drain. Um, 371 Point Avenue Road South and a parcel of land that's 12 acres. Um, that's actually 0 Point Avenue Road. So my first question is, what was the rationale for the, um, to not abandon the east branch drain? And how was this decision made?
Microphone.
So the process to abandon a drain, it can be by petition. So if you would prefer that it be abandoned, you could submit the petition and that would trigger the process to look at abandoning, abandoning it. I say process because if one person proposes to abandon and the drain serves 15 other people, you need the other people to get on board or not, right? So there's a, half of them have to also agree or 60% of the land area has to also agree. So there's a petition process by which you can proceed with an abandonment. The city can cause it to be abandoned because the road is partially served. The boundary, the road is actually outside the boundary. Only a small portion of the road allowance is assigned as part of this catchment. They serve the road with their own pump station that's further south. So their benefit of this drain is minor. But they could trigger the petition themselves. But they didn't want to do that because the drain essentially serves other people.
When you say serves other people, can you be specific who it's serving?
Sure. I can't zoom in any closer than this, but you see where it says Pam, Point Avenue Marsh, East Branch Drain. And the very top part is identified as a farm. And then all the stuff in that orange block, those are all the properties that are assessed as part of it.
I own two of those properties.
Yes.
And I can tell you that the east branch drain is not going to be improvement to my property. And the assessed value, I'm going to have to pay a $17,000. So if there is a petition that I can start to have that drain abandoned, I would do that today.
Okay, I, I think the person to talk to is Troy.
Troy, yeah.
I have, uh, many other questions, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So the other, um, concern I have is, is if this goes forward, um, if the, um, east branch drain, um, channel is, uh, put in place, it says it's, the paperwork says it's a two-stage channel. Um, is that just dredging or is there, is that what you were showing with the concrete blocks and the soil? No, that's just the outlet?
That's just the outlet.
Okay, so what is involved specifically with the dredging of the channel in the east branch drain?
Yeah, so, so right now, uh, where, where, where the outlet, where the east branch outlets to the main drain, it's a clearly defined channel. It's a little deeper than it needs to be, but we're not going to make it more shallow, right? It's going to stay the way it is. As you move upstream of the drain, it rapidly becomes less distinct. But it's still visible, but the banks are all over the place. And so the low-flow channel is meant to be the smallest size possible to carry water from the furthest end, right beside the eastern edge of the property, out to the outlet with a positive grade. But in flood times, this low-flow channel will not be enough. And so we make a second stage wider one that is dry most of the time and grows grass, but will flood on occasion when there's a lot of water. And so the tricky part of that is positioning those two parts so that the low-flow channel may have water in it, but the upper flow stays dry. And it's tricky to do right at that corner of the drain because when the lake comes up, it will fill water all the way back to that point and further.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the point of the east branch drain is to flow water away from Point Avenue Road South towards the, the Point Avenue Drain out to the lake?
That's the pathway, but it doesn't serve the road. It serves the properties around that area.
Okay, so I'm failing to understand how, who's benefiting from the east branch drain?
All the properties that are currently on it.
That would be me, two of the three, and we don't want it. So council, please take note that it's not wanted.
So that's because you're in Fort Erie, you take that to the Fort Erie side? It's just that because the two municipalities are doing this this evening, it's in Port Colburn, but you would go through Troy and the town of Fort Erie for that? Not, that wouldn't be done here?
Okay, except that it clearly said in the paperwork that this is, the point of this is how it benefits Port Colburn and how my property is benefiting Port Colburn from putting this drain in.
That would be a question that both Troy and Paul and Alana can answer with regards to that. But that part of the drain is entirely in Fort Erie. You wanna add anything, Troy, to that?
No, I have nothing to add.
So if this reading goes in today and council approves this plan, where does that leave the east branch drain?
Troy?
Well, if you petition to have it abandoned, then we go through that procedure.
And that procedure could take how long?
I'm not sure.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, sorry, I don't have a timeline for that on how long it would take.
But that's strictly done through the town?
Correct.
So the town council would meet on that?
Yes.
And they would make that decision? So it'd be how fast the petition goes in, how fast Troy's department gets a report into council?
Correct.
And if everybody agrees?
Yeah.
If you prepare the petition and everybody in there agrees? Like, it was an option that we looked at, right? And it's just, if everybody didn't agree, then we're left in the middle with nowhere to go.
Okay.
Right? But if, not to call you an instigator, but if you take on the task of getting that petition organized and everybody agrees, then it's relatively easy to go forward with.
Thank you.
But if somebody opposes it and wants the drain, then you'll have it, that's, the Draining Act then has processes for sorting those things out. They're not fast.
Okay. So just to be clear, if the east branch drain did not continue, if it was not built, it would not have an impact on anyone other than the people, those three properties that are outlined in that area that you just showed me?
It's a little bit more than three properties. I kept this specific in the outline.
It's more than three properties. It's, uh, three properties that were assessed because they're right up against the drain. But if I'm remembering, there's 10 to 12 properties in total that are into there. I'll show you that list so that you see everybody who's named.
Okay, thank you. The other questions I have relate to the actual, um, Point Avenue Drain itself in terms of right-of-way access. So we do own the property that abuts to the right-of-way. I think that was discussed of, of how to access, uh, the, the actual drain. That is a, uh, it's forested. It's, it's, there's, it's unopened road access. There is, uh, my question is, what does that process look like? Because it's gonna have a huge impact on our property as well because it abuts to it. It's directly on it.
And you're referring not to the east branch?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just leave it on.
Okay. You're referring to the main branch now, not the east branch? And the main branch you're referring to, south of the east branch?
Right, so I think the right-of-way that you were talking about, the unopened road access, that's not Matthews Road, but it's one in?
Yes.
Between Point Avenue and Matthews Road, there's an unopened road allowance?
Yes.
And I'm assuming that's how the, the, the plan would be for going in, or?
No, it's actually on the other side of the channel because it's, it's considered the high side of the channel. When we look at it, the, uh, it's the marsh on the west side. So we're, we're proposing to work from the easy side, which is the east side. And so that 10 meters is an allowance, but the intention is to cause the least impact to the trees along that area. But we still have to have enough space for a machine to track at the edge of the drain from south to north.
So Kristen, you got a minute left? If you could just, if you wanna, uh, because, and our two staff members, Troy and Alana and Paul can be available after the meeting if you have any questions then.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh, back in the corner here?
Hi.
Hi.
Pressure, you have to press the red button, name, address. Hi, Christian DiCienzo, 5353 Mitroner Road. So you mentioned in, like, kind of north to south here behind Point Avenue Road South. I didn't hear you explain a little bit coming kind of east to west across. What would be involved in the work getting done? Kind of from, um, from Holloway Bay Road in behind Marcy's Woods there and through towards, um, towards Point Avenue Road South? Would that be similar work being done there as the culverts you're mentioning?
Not, not the culverts, um, but the north-south piece. Again, I, I think we're proposing to work on the north side through there. And, um...
So like down, like at the end of Matthews Road? At the south end of Matthews Road?
The south end of Matthews Road, but all the way, um, all the way to there?
Yeah.
On the north side.
And what would be involved in that work?
It, it's the same process for all maintenance, which is an access adjacent to the drain and then removing any deadfall and spot elevations where you can see that there's an obstruction in the flow. They remove the sediment and it gets spread adjacent to the drain. The same spot that it is. And as a landowner, you can say if you want it spread out or left piled up, however you would like that finished.
Okay, and then the south side of that culvert is not in similar, I believe, as Jeff had mentioned, some, in some other areas? You can't really recognize that south side of that culvert, what's gonna be done there?
Yeah, even the bank. I mean, it's why it's called the Point Avenue Marsh in that area because the bank is mostly there, but in some places it's pretty well-connected to the Point Avenue Marsh. And what, as a hydraulic engineer, that's actually a benefit. Because when there's a storm and that starts to go up, it will go into the marsh. The marsh is like a giant stormwater pond in an urban area. So it takes up some water, but it also holds water. And then we believe it's connected to the lake. So when the lake's high, there's water that's probably coming through there and then going around the drain.
Yeah, I just wonder about the, the work being done up in Port, um, up, up, upstream and how that affects the marsh if it's an excessive amount of water into the forested area? Because if the lake is high and then there, there's larger culverts, there's availability of more water coming from Port Colburn, but really it's gonna be, be using probably that marsh area as a reservoir?
Yes, I think that will happen for larger storms. For the storm that we're looking at, we're trying to get the capacity so that it's...
Sorry.
Oh, sorry about that.
For larger storms, yes, I think you're correct. Is excess flows will transfer into the Port Avenue Marsh area. But what we're looking at is that design standard 68-millimeter storm having a consistent flow path from the very upper part of Port Colburn all the way to the outlet. And that's, in the model, that will consistently work when we have positive grades, even though they're really low, like, you know, below .06 in the very last north-south piece. But when the lake is high from the analysis, it has a massive impact on how fast the water can get out. And it's that last bit from east branch that the lake affects the most. So water will still move in that west-to-east direction, but once it gets there, it's gonna be in a fight with the lake for where it goes after that.
Yep. Okay, answered my question, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, come on up.
Hi, Rick Trojner, 551 Point Avenue Road South. So as I understand it, in our section, um, most of the work you're doing is, is you're considering maintenance. And I've been allocated a charge for that sometime, somehow I get charged for that. I'm not sure how or when. But anyway, uh, what happens next year when the Beavers build dams, stuff flows downstream and the channel gets clogged again? Who's gonna take care of that? And do we get charged again for maintenance or what, what's the story on that?
Troy? So, go ahead, Troy, you go ahead.
That's where you, you call me. I'll come in and either remove the Beaver Dam or clear the blockages.
So why are we getting charged separately for maintenance now rather than Fort Erie just taking care of that section now?
So I'll take that one. So right now, whenever they charge for maintenance, they're using the report from 1958.
Okay.
So the idea is to update the report and have all of the assessments updated. And so maintenance will proceed from now forward using those updated assessments. So the thing that never changes is maintenance. Maintenance always needs to be done.
Of course.
Generally speaking, in the report, we talk about one in 10 years or one in 20 years, but really the drainage superintendents are aiming for one in five. We say it in the report to give them some fudge, some room, so that someone doesn't say, you're not following your, your service level standard. But generally speaking, part of the reason we want to establish an access path on that east side is to make the execution of maintenance more likely to happen in a more frequent basis. But it's still paid for by everybody in the watershed.
So how do we see that charged? Like, do we get a bill for it every time Troy does maintenance or?
Troy?
How often do you bill maintenance?
Um, I'm not sure. I just put it in as maintenance and it goes through finance, so.
I see.
I, I don't know what the finance, how they bill it out. I can find out for you.
Okay. Thanks for...
It'll be on my cards.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Further questions? Oh, you've already been up, sorry. Well, you can ask these guys after. Just, just ask Paul after. Yeah. Yep, come on up.
Hello, my name is, uh, Andrew Grine. I live at, uh, 4906 Baywoods Road. And, um, first question is for the engineer. Can you explain what the red dotted line is here on the map?
The red line?
Yeah, the red dotted line that goes all the way around.
Paul, yeah, you have to go, yeah, okay. Camera guy doesn't let you block that, it's camera.
So that's the line that I draw as the watershed boundary. So the original line from the 1958 report, or like the last C.J. Clark report, is similar to that. But since then, I've had the benefit of a computer database showing the elevations and updated contour lines. And so, um, originally it was a slightly different shape, but we reviewed that dataset and we drew that. It's the best that I can figure out by looking at that data without actually going on site and surveying the whole thing.
Okay. And I'd just like to say a couple things. First off, uh, thank you to the, uh, city of Port Colburn for having this meeting tonight. I had the opportunity to drive down, uh, Holloway Bay Road tonight. And when you're driving out Holloway Bay Road, looking at the water, going towards the lake, you look to the right and you can see that Port Colburn has taken the time to clean their drain. And you can see a pathway and you can see very far down the drain, and it looks excellent. Unfortunately, when you look to the left at the Fort Erie side, they haven't done the work and it's very, um, sad to see that. I just wanted to make that comment as well. But the second thing I'd like to say about it is, on, at the end of Baywoods Road, and Jeff Shaw was up here talking about Wildwood Road, it seems to me that those would be two excellent places, Troy, for access points to the drain. Now, you talked about the trees. Well, if you look up at the trees, most of them are dead. Most of them are ash trees that are ready to fall over, are gonna fall over very soon. And it seems like you could make paths to the drain on Baywoods and on Wildwood and have your access points to get back there to clean out the drains. Also, what has happened with the Emerald Ash Bore Bug that has killed all these ash trees? There are several trees that have fallen down that seem to be blocking the path of the water. And I know that from 50 years of being on my property and seeing where the water has flown before the trees came down to now being there and having massive trees that are just laying down in all different directions. And, uh, from what I understand from the town of Fort Erie, that is wetland area and we cannot do anything with those trees. But if there was some way that they could be turned so that the water could flow back, because what I'm talking about, now, if I can stand up right here, right at the end of, right here on Baywoods, this area back here, which I am, I believe you, uh, referred to, part of this is the, um, Point Avenue Marsh?
It's to the west of the drain, but there is an identified wetland that's in that area.
So, uh, but what is happening is that these trees that have fallen are blocking the flow of the water and it's causing the water to pool, especially in my yard. And I, um, just spent, uh, an excessive amount of money to have worked on my foundation and fill and everything else to, uh, try to stop the water from going underneath my house. Because during the flooding, I had about three feet of water in my yard and about three feet of water under my house, and I had water flowing into the septic system. So I, I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further questions? Oh, yeah, come on up.
Hi, I'm Sally Howard. I live at 391 Point Avenue South. My concerns are, you talked about doing your excavating and your clearing on the south side, which would, abuts right where I live. If you talk about doing the draining of that, working on the south side, you're going to be disturbing beautiful trees that are already established because I butt right up to that marshland that is all dead. So how are you gonna protect the property owners that already have this established, nice green space?
Sorry, I, you're gonna have to show me where you are. Because I, I don't, you're mostly talking about north-south work?
I live...
Like work that we're here on the west side? So can you show me where you are?
Where's Matthews Road on here?
Matthews Road is right up here.
Right here, okay, so...
You're to the, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm right, I own like 600 feet of that.
Yes.
So that's my concern is when you go in there and you can start dredging and clearing, how are you going to protect, which we live in a protected land and we can't do anything with our trees or anything now, but how are you gonna go in there and, and do that?
So to clarify right off the bat, it's not me, it's Troy that's gonna have that difficult job?
Yeah.
But generally speaking, the person is working from the top of the drain and is working to ensure there's no obstructions. So it's not dredging. Dredging kind of means to clear a whole path, but we're proposing just spot work, right?
Oh, not like Ha, Port Colburn Holloway Bay where it's that clear cut?
To, to speak to the gentleman that was up previously, not to say that Port Colburn had it easy, but they have very distinct positive grade to that Holloway Bay Road. And then after that, the grade is very, very hard to see.
Yeah.
And so it's not so much that it's gonna look the same, but any place that's an identified high spot, they'll pull just that piece out. And so we're, we're trying to achieve a balance between what we need to do to reduce the risk of flooding, but not disturb any trees that we can that are in above that. Because trees are beneficial all the way around. Their roots help to hold the soil in place. Their roots help to hold the soil in place, we want the trees, but if we can't get through with a machine, then we have a problem. And in my other reports, I've always included a budget as a two-for-one tree. If we take a tree out of that top part, we provide the owner with two saplings to plant...
I have, I have one hundred-year-old trees. I don't want two saplings.
I know, that's, it's not, it's not a perfect deal to replace a mature tree with a little sapling.
It's a devastation to the property owners that live along there. When I first moved there, over thirteen years ago, the trees were beautiful in the back. Now, it's, it's like a war zone back there. There's been no maintenance for over thirteen years. No one's come to move a tree out of that creek. I call it the creek, but it's a ditch. So it is, is, once we do this, is there gonna be any maintenance of people checking on it like once a year? Was there a program involved for, in this?
There is a program, yeah.
I haven't seen one in thirteen years.
Yeah, I'll be cleaning it. I've started actually cleaning from, uh, west of Matthews Road. I, I had to get in there and get a beaver dam out. So we've pulled all the, the deadfall west of Matthews all the way about a kilometer in towards Port Colburn, so.
Okay, that's my big concern is, is saving the trees and less disruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no more questions? I'll come back to you. Yep, you got one? Yeah, come on up.
Um, I'm Jenny Marlat from, uh, seven hundred Pleasant Beach Road. Um, and if my questions seem a little bit general, I'm just, I just want to kind of clarify that I clearly understand kind of what the point of this kind of whole operation is and, um, how much of why we're in this situation is due to lack of maintenance in the past and how much of this is preventative for, um, future storm surges and things like that and how much of it is general necessary preservation of kind of the economical, or not economical, environmental kind of situation that's happening in these points that are mainly affected such as Wildwood or Point Avenue Bay Woods areas.
Paul?
A, a, a general question, we'll get a general response in that, uh, we have some legislation in Ontario that lets engineers and other agencies deal with surface water or groundwater, but it's spread over quite a few different pieces of legislation. So cities and conservation authorities working in cities like the GTA generally have different practices and procedures that they follow. In this case, the Drainage Act is one of the oldest pieces of legislation in Ontario. It goes back a long time and this drain dates back to that early start. And over that time, things changed in our perspectives. There used to be a part of the Drainage Act that dealt with pollution, but it was an overlap with what happened in the seventies with the Ministry of Environment, so they took it out of the Drainage Act because there's new legislation that deals with pollution. It's better legislation than used to be in the Drainage Act. So the point is that there, things change and who's responsible for what. The Drainage Act is for the benefit of everybody that's in the watershed and it assigns the engineer to do section seventy-eight improvements, where there's something specific that needs to get done that changes the size of the drain or the grade of the drain or its intended original function, but almost everything else is considered maintenance. So in many of these cases here, I'm not changing the drain other than saying it works this way in metric, which is really the same that it worked in feet and inches, but it's now stated in metric. And I'm updating the assessment schedules based on what we know for property today. So it was delayed for a long time and it's now being done. It's just part of the process of the Drainage Act. I think that it moves in long schedules.
So the entire process essentially is maintenance? This isn't necessarily about, um, better prevention of...
Well, the, the outlet is a section seventy-eight improvement, because it's a replacement of what was there with a different design. So that's a section seventy-eight improvement by the engineer. So it's assessed a particular way because it's part of the report in a particular way. But the part north-south where we're proposing to do this work is just maintenance. There's not a functional change, the drain doesn't work dramatically better than it was originally intended to, it's just maintenance to make it work the way it was supposed to work. But it, like, we're doing all of this work within what the Drainage Act tells us we can do. And it's a user pay system. All the people in the watershed pay for the work to get done.
And is that how these, these designs work in other municipalities as well?
Any municipality that follows the Drainage Act, that's how it works. Um, there's municipalities in urban areas that are starting to charge, you know, in the last ten years, I think Kitchen of Waterloo started this ten years ago, they charge a stormwater fee in the urban area. And it's based on the size of the property and how much pavement they have determines how much they pay. Different municipalities do it differently, but many are moving towards paying for stormwater as having a fee.
And has this historically always been structured that way?
Historically...
This area in Port Colburn?
Oh, this, yeah, yeah, the, the Drainage Act in Port Col...
The Drainage Act has always been paid for by those under the watershed?
Yes. At different times, there's been different grant programs. Um, that act that I pointed out from the nineteen hundred originally was a grant program for farmers to be able to get drainage established, uh, but that hasn't been in place for a long time. There is still a grant program for farmers. That's why I show the farms there. They're, they're eligible still for a grant.
Okay, I see. That's all the questions.
Great, thank you. Okay, seeing no further questions? Anything to add, Alana, or... Oh, sorry. Yes. Yep, you.
He said sorry, so. You write down if I can.
Hi, I'm Wendy Sanders and I live at nine twenty-one Point Avenue Road South and I've been pretty intimately involved with the flooding as a result of the lake levels increasing, um, in the late teen, twenty teens and the early, before COVID. Since then, that task force dissolved and Troy, I don't think you were here at that time yet. Um, you may have spoken at one of the public meetings near the end, but it feels like we've already paid for the maintenance in previous tax assessments. And while I can appreciate the need to update the schedules going forward, it feels like the people who have been most victimized by not productive maintenance of the, of the area are now being forced to pay again. So I, I don't know if there's anything that we can do to mitigate that and it may be too late because this study started in nineteen, I believe, but it does feel a little bit like there was dereliction of duty by someone or an entity and that now in order to catch up, we're going to pay again.
Anything to add, Paul?
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think there's a dereliction of duty here in any way, shape or form. This is a challenging drain to do work in and the Point Avenue Marsh has a very direct impact on how that challenged, along with the environmental impacts of the, uh, ash bore causing a lot of deadfall. Um, we're, we're recognizing there is a problem, which is why the report's coming forward and addressing. And, you know, the, the outlet was identified through a maintenance process to do inspection for improvement and we're recognizing and working to solve that problem.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Okay. Alana, anything to add?
No, I have nothing further to add.
Troy, anything to add?
No, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to add.
Great, thank you. You're all set, Paul. Okay, back to council, questions? Counselor Bodnar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification, uh, to Paul. We heard a couple of, uh, speakers talk about, uh, the deadfall in the drain, probably in the, um, in the marsh area or the protected wetlands. Uh, I'm unclear, can you go in there and remove that if you can get to it? Or are you blocked out by Conservation Authority, whatever, from doing anything in there?
Oh, um, that's actually, I guess... Um, the Point Avenue Marsh is identified as a provincially significant wetland, as is even the little wetland on the east side. But the Drainage Act existed before the act existed that protects those wetlands, so the drain has precedence. And Troy can do work to solve those issues with the proper notice. There's a cooperation between the Conservation Authority and the Drainage Superintendents for a process by which they provide notice and they go ahead and do the maintenance. Um, there is a challenge because we can grapple the trees on the nearside bank, but we need to have enough reach to get to the far side. And it may be that some of those just get moved so that they're in line with the flow and not obstructing the flow, depending on how far and how long the boom is that we're trying to reach with. But the far side can pose some challenges.
Counselor? All set? Anybody else?
Okay.
So, uh, I've got Counselors Elliott and Hoyle move that the Public Works Department report two zero two-five dash one five six be received. The mayor and clerk be directed to execute a bylaw to provisionally adopt the Point Avenue Drain Engineers Report dated February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Yeah. Thinking about today's date. Um, prepared by Paul Marsh, P N of EWA Engineering, under section seventy-eight, chapter D seventeen of the Drainage Act, RSO nineteen ninety, and that, and we have to choose two counselors and one alternate, uh, be appointed to sit in the Court of Revision. And the third seat of the panel will be appointed by the town of Fort Erie. So it'll be three and then one alternate. And that's it, questions on that? Before I go to say who's on this. Counselor Bodnar?
So will that Court of Revision happen in August? I'm gonna wait for August, that's why.
Yeah, so, Alana.
Oh, sorry, Alana.
Yep, we'll go to Alana.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, due to the timing of being able to get out the notificat- or the decision for this evening with the provisional bylaw and then allowing the certain days notice of when we're going to be holding the meeting, that most likely will be in September, only because I've heard from a couple of you now saying that August is not, um, looking good.
So it'll be after August and you sound like you're okay to go on this committee? Is that what I'm hearing, Counselor?
Yeah, I would, I just hate to, oh, you get out of the house.
Okay. So I have Counselors Elliott and Bodnar?
So...
And can I have Counselor Hoyle as an alternate? Can I have Counselor Hoyle as an alternate? Thank you, Counselor Hoyle. So the Counselor Bodnar and Counselor Elliott be appointed to sit in the count, uh, Court of Revision and that Counselor Hoyle be appointed as an alternate. And again, the third seat is appointed by the town of Fort Erie. Further questions, comments? All in favor? That's carried. Uh, on to bylaws, we have bylaw, uh, seven-three-six-four-five-five-two-five and bylaw seven-three-six-five-five-six-two-five. If I could have Counselors Bodnar and Baguie move those two bylaws? Questions? All in favor? That's carried. That ends our meeting, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. Thanks for being good sports tonight, that was good, and good questions, by the way. Thank you.